Call this work session to order. It is 5:32. Roll call.
Alex Cantu, President.
Alda Benavides, President.
Espirito, President.
Nerida Cantu, President.
Dr. Science, I declare a call. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comments?
We have no public comments, Dr. Benavides.
If there are no public comments, we will move to item number five. Resilient School Support Program Presentation on Identified Student and Staff Needs Created by the COVID-19 Pandemic.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. Mr. Martín Munoz, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction is going to lead us in this discussion. Board of Trustees, you have a binder. The contents on tab one is the document for this presentation. And basically, this is a presentation on how we identify needs created by COVID-19. Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Dr. Science, before we get started, Mrs. Mary Hernández joined us at 5:33 PM. Welcome, Ms. Hernández.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Yusella Science, members of the community, distinguished guests. We will be presenting on the Resilient School Support Program Presentation on Identified Student and Staff Needs Created by COVID-19 Pandemic. Now, this presentation not only serves to let our Board of Trustees and community know what, as a district, we've identified as needs and our approach to solve those needs, but it also serves the role, a purpose of meeting the RSP requirements of having a community meeting where we let the community know what we, as a district, are we going to be doing to mitigate the effects of COVID-19 when it comes to learning recovery and safely reopening up our schools. So for the community, we would like to, first of all, give you a district overview. As a district, our vision statement is educational excellence is a right of every student. And our district mission is that La Jolla ISD is committed to providing educational excellence through rigor, relevance, relationships, and personal responsibility. As a district, we recognize that we're the integral part of learning for students become successful and productive contributors to the global society. We embrace with passion the commitment to continuous improvement, collaboration, and accountability that will allow our students to imprint the world. Now, over the past two school years, the La Jolla ISD school community experienced significant challenges associated with COVID-19 when it comes to health and wellness, social-emotional learning, and learning loss. Now, looking ahead, our community will continue to have significant needs across these three key areas: learning recovery, social-emotional supports, and health and wellness. So to address the challenges, our district did partner with or apply for the grant through TA called the RSSP, the Resilient School Support Program. TA did assign us a technical advisor that helped us craft this plan. Now, our recovery plan approach is one that is inclusive and supportive of the broader school community, particularly campus leaders, teachers, and families. As you can see on slide seven, La Jolla ISD was one of 70 schools that participated in this grant. Now, with, once we were accepted to participate in this grant, this was a timeline of events that, as a district, we had to follow to be able to craft this plan. We started with a project setup. We then analyzed student data. We tried to understand our stakeholder needs, then make key decisions, identify short-term actions, align our plan to other work that we currently have in place, and then share the plan with the community. So starting off with the project setup, how we organized ourselves to do this work. So we created a district-wide learning acceleration task force. This task force met weekly, starting on April 23rd. It was comprised of approximately 30 members representing campuses and central office departments. And the purpose of the task force was to review academic and stakeholder survey data and build research-based and rather craft a research-based plan to accelerate student learning. On slide 11, you can see as to how it was organized. We did create an elementary planning committee, a middle school planning committee, and a high school planning committee, supported by district-level leadership. And on slide 12, you can see the members of those committees or the group of staff members that composed the committee. At the district level, we did have Dr. Science spearheading this group, assisted by myself and Mr. Rick Villan. Both, or the elementary, middle school, and high school, they were staffed by executive directors from Curriculum Instruction and Student Services. Facilities also participated. We had content coordinators, principals, assistive principals, and teachers. So once we staffed or created those committees, we started looking at student data. Now, to understand and to keep that in mind, we did look, do a district overview. We wanted to know what we were working with. So as a district, we serve approximately 26,532 students in over 42 campuses, 23 elementary schools, eight middle schools, three comprehensive high schools, 77 specialty schools, and a Head Start program. In regards to student demographics, 91.39% of our population is economically disadvantaged. 77.6% are at risk. 56.64% are limited English proficient, and 99% are Hispanic. Of those 26,500 students that we have, we did have 3,202 students that were identified as special ed. 435 students were identified as homeless, and 36 students were in foster care. In regards to staff demographics, we had 291 instructional assistants supporting these students, 1,889 teachers, 84 counselors, 27 special ed diagnosticians, two dyslexic diagnosticians, and 109 campus administrators. Now, on slide 17, you will be able to see a comparison of our student data in regards to how our students did at the conclusion of this school year, the 2021 school year, in comparison to how our students did in 2018, 2019, the last year where we had complete student data. So in the area of pre-K, when it comes to rapid letter naming, in 2018, 2019, we had, our precares were able to rapidly name 35 letters as an average. This year, at the conclusion of this year, they were only able to name 18 letters as an average. That's a drop of 17 letters. In kinder, when it comes to fluency, back in 2018, 2019, 82% of our students were able to read 30 words or more correctly per minute. At the conclusion of this year, we, only 35% of our kindergartners were able to read that amount. So that's a drop of 47%. In first grade, back in 2018, 2019, 70% of our students were able to read 50 to 60 words correct per minute. This past year, only 33%, a drop of 37% points. In second grade, back in 2018, 2019, 64% of our students were able to read 80 to 90 words correct per minute. This past year, that dropped to 40%, so a drop of 24 points. When we started looking at star data, on page 18, you can see how our students didn't when it comes to reading. In third grade, there was a drop, and you'll see the different subgroups that we monitor. You have the all-student column, the ELO column, our special ed column, and then our gifted and talented. And you can see that there was drops across the board when it comes to third grade all the way through eighth grade. The most significant drops, of course, were in our ELO population, where the average close to 30 points drop across the board. But in reality, you can see that it affected everyone. Now, the data that you see on page 18 does include non-participants or non-testers in the average. If, and on page 19, you see how many of our students actually participated in the assessment program. Right, in third grade, only 74%. When on a, historically, we have averaged over 95% participation. That dropped to 74. Fourth grade, only 75% of our students came into test. Fifth grade, 75. Sixth grade, only 60%. Seventh grade, 62. Eighth grade, 59%. In our ELA 1 and ELA, and of course, assessments, we only had, we had 76% participation. So if you exclude those non-testers, you get to see the data there on slide 20. Right, our reading data excluding non-testers as in the average.
Say that again, Mr. Munoz. I want to make sure I got it straight.
Yes, ma'am. On slide 18,
Okay.
you will see the average scores when we include the non-testers in the average. Right, as--
So to figure out the average, you had all the kids?
Correct, Dr. Science. As the denominator. Right, we included the non-testers in the denominator.
Okay.
When you exclude them, you see the percentage points or the scores on slide 20. Right, so even when you exclude them, we see significant drops across the board.
And the reason that we included them on slide 18 is the state is asking or saying that any student that did not take the test should be considered a non-passer for the purpose of establishing individualized learning plans for them.
So then, the ones on page 20, those-- it, I see it now. It excludes the non-testers.
Correct.
So this is, this is like accurate data based on the kids that tested.
That is correct.
But the other one, because the state is encouraging to count them as non-, you know, I mean, as if they didn't take, which they didn't, then that's why the others--
That is correct, Dr. Science.
It's a little promising. A little, only because--
Unfortunately, it is incomplete data. Right, it's incomplete--
The ones that took it, I mean, yes, they went down, but at least you don't see minuses of 49 and 39 and 29. You know, they went down, of course, and we expected that, but not as much. But with the others, well, it's understood that if they didn't come into test and they have to be counted, well, then our percentages are going to be lower.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
No, no, yes. And now, on slide 21, you will see the math data, including those non-participants in the denominator. Right, so, and just like we've seen across the state, we saw bigger drops in math than we did in reading.
And the, and the word across the state is that the kids are scoring one year below. But I thought to myself, one year below across the state means three years for us. I mean, I hate to be so pessimistic, but that's reality.
Correct, Dr. Science. Yes, historically, our students have bigger needs, and when there's interruptions in schooling, they do drop further from, behind because they don't have those, unfortunately, they don't have those supports outside of the school. Right, we have always said that our district and our campuses are the equalizers. Right, because we provide those supports to the students that they don't have at home.
Correct.
And then on slide 22, you see the participation rates. We averaged in the 70s, upper 60s, lower 70s when it comes to participating. So 25% of our students did not come into test. And then you see the percentages when we exclude the non-testers.
I'm sorry, sir. And those were considered as failing?
Correct, Dr. Cantu. One of the initiatives, House Bill 4545, and one of the stipulations that is requiring in districts now is that we see non-participate, students that did not test as non-passers that we have then create, have to create intervention plans for. So when they compiled this report, they want, they wanted us to see the difference. And like I told Dr. Benavides, when we, when we're looking at the excluding non-tester data, it's incomplete data. Right, the data will be skewed by the population that does come into test. Right. So on slide 23, you will see the significant drops that our student had due to the interruptions in learning. As an average, we're talking about close to 40% mid, in the mid-40s across the board when it comes to the all-students and the ELO students, our limited English proficient students. Now, on slide 24, you will see the end-of-course data. English 1, English 2, Algebra 1, Biology, and US History. And just like the state, right, our students were hardest hit in the area of math, in the subject of math. We had a 45% drop from 2018, 19, comparison to 2021. And on slide 25, we will see the participation rates. Right, we had 77% of our students come into and test in algebra, 74 tested in science, 81% in social studies, 76% came in and tested in ELA 1 and ELA 2. And again, commendations to our assessment and accountability department. They did an excellent job going out to the, to the community via our Facebook and social media to try and encourage our kids to come in. We, they implemented safety protocols to make sure that our students came in and were able to test safely. And that is why our percentages are what you see. Had they not had these initiatives in place, it would have been a lot worse. Right, but comparatively, as a district, our participation rates are really good when you look at our neighboring school districts. Okay, so we, as a committee, we analyzed student data, but we also wanted to understand our stakeholder needs. So we surveyed the community. We surveyed parents, students, staff, our Board of Trustees to gather their input to determine priority areas on which our district should allocate time, energy, and resources. The goal was to gather their input to help determine how to safely reopen and how to safely sustain the safe operation of our district and to address the impact of the coronavirus pandemic on our district students. In response, we had 1,268 employees and community members respond, 1,396 parents, and 196 students. So starting on page 30, you will see our staff responses. When we asked our staff or the district employees what the top issues currently facing students in our district during the COVID-19 pandemic, the top three concerns were connectivity issues, the learning gaps, and social-emotional wellness. And when we asked them what they believe was the highest priority needs starting with the summer and leading up to the 2122 school year, the majority of the respondents did say it was going to be academic, social-emotional, mental health, and physical wellness, physical health. Those were the top three concerns. When we asked them which demographic group or district should prioritize support, the top three responses were prioritize the low-income students, our English-language learners, and our students with disabilities. In the area of accelerated learning, we asked them what strategies they thought we could implement as a district. The top response was for us to provide summer learning opportunities that we also provide after-school learning opportunities followed by Saturday learning opportunities, the extended week. When we asked them in the area of social-emotional health what strategies our district should emphasize, they did ask that we provide mental health services and supports to students, that we provide mental health services and supports to staff, and that we provide parental parenting classes. Now, in the area of safety, when we asked the staff what strategies your district should prioritize, the top three responses were purchasing supplies to clean and sanitize schools, to inspect and upgrade if necessary the ventilation and HVAC systems in our district, and school facility repairs and improvements to minimize the risk of viral transmission. In the area of technology, we asked them what strategies they thought our district should prioritize. The majority asked that we improve our district infrastructure and high-speed internet, that we also provide technology for online learning to all students, and that we provide assistive technology to our students with disabilities. Now, on slide 37, you will see some of their responses when it came to other considerations. And these are quotes that were directly taken from that survey from some of our teachers. One teacher wrote that teachers had spent a considerable amount of money for technology. Another one asked that we prioritize taking care of teachers and also that the district helped teachers mentally, physically, and financially. Another teacher wrote that as teachers, they had experienced a lot more stress during COVID-19, that they had to face lots of challenges, lots of additional time and resources had to be invested in instruction, planning, and also in helping students. The teacher did ask for you to consider additional compensation for teachers. Another teacher wrote that as a district, we needed to provide parental involvement sessions to educate parents on how to check assignments if they were going to select virtual instruction as an option. And then another teacher wanted our Board of Trustees and community know that as a teacher, that she was very grateful to the district for the support that the district had offered teachers and the community, that she loves the district, that our district was amazing, but that she, we needed to bring our kids back into the classroom. Now, when we surveyed parents, you will see their responses, starting there on page 39. When we asked our parents what top two strategies they considered vital when addressing learning loss, our parents did ask that we provide after-school tutorials and that we provide extended-day learning and extended school year, which is summer school. When we asked them in regards to how our district could improve on training that is being offered to the parents, the parents did ask for training and technology, that we hold parent-teacher conferences, and that we give them an opportunity to have question-and-answer sessions. On a scale of 1 to 5, when they were asked how concerned they were in regards to their children's or their child's social-emotional well-being, the majority did respond that they were very concerned, 5 being the highest. So 430 respondents said that they were at a level 5, that they were very concerned. When we asked them what strategies they would, they thought would help their children's social-emotional needs, the majority did say that as a district, we should provide more mental health and behavioral supports for their students, followed by motivational speakers, that their children would need motivation, and parent trainings on social-emotional learning. And on page 43, you will see direct quotes taken from those parent surveys. One parent wrote that she thinks more counselors were going to be, were going to be, were going to need to be available to their, to their students, that our students needed to have someone to talk to. Another parent asked that we provide parent trainings in social-emotional learning, more mental health and behavioral supports for students, programs, or software to help in the implementation of social-emotional learning. One parent wrote that you can never be safe, but as a district, for us to, just for everyone in the district to be extremely cautious with maintaining every aspect of the school sanitized at all times after every touch, every use, and for us to constantly advise our students to mask up, wash hands, and keep social distancing. Another parent emphasized that we needed to invest in better air filtration and air purifiers. Also, for us to do PE class outdoors when possible instead of any closed gym. Now, we, we will present now on our student responses. These are how our students responded to that survey. When our students were asked what supports they would need, the top three responses were that they needed access to online self-help resources on managing stress, anxiety, and developing resilience. They also asked for easy access support groups focusing on encouragement and positive themes. And they asked for brief, supportive, confidential 1:1 opportunities with a qualified counselor or trainee via a secure virtual platform. When we asked them what kind of information they thought they or their peers might most appreciate, they asked that we provide them with help with managing stress and anxiety, maintaining healthy lifestyle choices, and also with coping with loss and grief. Now, the next two slides, you will see direct quotations from our students when it came to the survey. One student wrote the following. Says, "Ways that it could improve would be by giving us an opportunity to cope with personal issues or by giving us someone to talk to. Even though we already, we already have counselors, we might just need a personal counselor. Changing the way teachers act towards students that are actually putting effort into passing their class but are still failing. I'm not sure if many teachers are like this at this school, but in my previous schools, from my experience, I have dealt with teachers that would get mad at students for not doing well in their class, even if they would be trying their best. I say this mainly because some of the reasons as to why students might be, might still be failing even though they're trying really hard might be because of personal issues, family issues, or many other problems outside of the school. I also say this because I've experienced it and I know what it feels like to be at fault for not passing even though I'm trying my best. This response also gives reasons as to why we need better mental health providers at the school or at least administrators that can recommend students or parents to a counselor and/or therapist." Another student asked that we focus on the students. The student wrote that for a school district, you would think that students are the top priority, but it feels like it cashes the priority. So many students are falling apart in front of their eyes and teachers' parents ignore the signs because it is passed off as being moody. It doesn't surprise me that many students think of suicide or result in using drugs or abusing alcohol. For the love of God, pay attention because we won't ask for help because to us, that's difficult. When you see a student with scars, underweight, crying in your class, under eyes that are darker than they should be, do something about it. Also, you really should renovate or, I don't know, maybe put money into the school." So those were our student responses. So we, we looked at the data. We read through those surveys. And as a committee, we started making key decisions. So informed by the task force, the La Jolla ISD has identified the following district-wide priorities for learning acceleration for next school year. First one is learning acceleration strategies, meaning early start program, during-school and after-school tutorials, Saturday tutorials, summer recovery programs. In the area of social-emotional recovery interventions, as a district, we are planning on implementing the mindfulness program, PBIS, OVEAS, and Tier 3 student intervention programs. In the area of parental involvement, we are planning on providing our parents an Empowering Parents Training Series, which is, it's a series of trainings to teach parents literacy, math, technology, and social-emotional health strategies. In the area of technology supports, we're planning on improving our district bandwidth and purchasing and maintaining our devices. Under physical wellness, we are implementing a summer wellness program and we're looking to upgrade district facilities to facilitate more open-air physical activities. And when it comes to facility upgrades, we're looking at improving air filtration systems and building outside-covered areas for our students. Now, to go more into, in depth into those strategies, the following slides will give you a more complete picture as to what those strategies are. So starting with learning acceleration strategies, we would like to present our plan for the elementary. So at the elementary level, the following learning acceleration plans will be followed. We will implement an early start program. So two weeks, it's a two-week program that we will implement at the beginning of the school year focusing on enrichment acceleration activities for our Tier 1 students. Those are our on-level students. We will be providing in-school tutorials. So to address literacy skills recovery during the instructional day, 45 minutes will be allocated to enrichment enhancement opportunities. To provide small-group intervention and student acceleration, our support staff, the gifted and talented teacher, the reading specialist, and our special education teachers will pull out students. After-school tutorials to address math skills recovery, Tier 2 students, these are our students that require urgent interventions, and our Tier 3 students, those students that are at risk of retention. Well, these students are going to receive two hours of additional instruction on Monday and two hours of additional instruction on Tuesday for a total of four additional hours of instruction in math. We will also implement computer-based tutorials. Our Tier 3 students will receive two hours of interventions through a combination of software and in-person supports on Thursdays and Fridays, so an additional four hours of instruction. And we will offer Saturday enrichment camps to our Tier 2 and our Tier 3 students. They will receive four hours of tutoring through a combination, again, of software and in-person supports. And then we will also offer a summer recovery program, a 20-day recovery program for our struggling students in the summer. Our middle school will be very similar to our elementary. However, they do, because of their schedule, they did find some time at the beginning of the school day, so they will be offering an early bird tutorial. the school day, so they will be offering an early bird tutorial. So for those students that arrive early, those students will start working on their computer intervention programs early in the day. They will also have in-school tutors to address recovery during the instructional day. Tiered instructional groups will be created based on ongoing format of submitted data. Targeted instruction will be provided by teachers and tutors to provide small group intervention and student acceleration. When it comes to the high school, again, recognizing and that our incoming eighth graders and our algebra testers were the hardest hit when it comes to learning loss, we tailored a very specific plan to address that concern. So at the high school level, the following learning acceleration plan will be followed. Algebra I focused interventions utilizing our Silver Lining curriculum. We will be providing strategic learning for a high school mathematics course. So we will be creating a course that will provide strategic learning for those, for math. An Algebra I homework assistance academy, an Algebra I quarterly campus parent engagement meetings, in-school tutorials to address math skills recovery during the instructional day. Tiered instructional groups will be created based on ongoing format of submitted data. Targeted instruction will be provided by Algebra I teachers and consultants to provide small group intervention and student acceleration. We will provide after-school extended day learning, where a tutorial will be given in the areas of math to our tier-two and our tier-three students. They will receive two hours of additional instructional time on Tuesdays and Thursdays for a total of four. The Edgenuity Course software will be used for our end-of-course credit recovery and college readiness. We will have a summer end-of-course and credit recovery program. We will continue to use our Texas Virtual School Network to accelerate, to provide acceleration opportunities. And we will have a two-week summer bridge program for our incoming freshmen that are attending our academies, and we will also provide Saturday enrichment camps. And on slide fifty-five, you can see what are the plan for our high school students that have not yet passed their end-of-course exams. For example, in our ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students that had not yet tested or had not yet met the criteria, well, this past summer, we did offer them an end-of-course program so that our students could have an opportunity to be successful on the STAR EOC retest. Now, those students that did not master their EOCs this summer, because either they did not test or they did not meet the criteria, well, they have an opportunity this upcoming December. To get our kids, our students ready, these students will be scheduled in an end-of-course intervention prep course. And then you see the list of courses that we will be offering and designing to help these students meet their end-of-course criteria by December. So that is what we're doing for learning recovery. We will now move on to our social-emotional recovery interventions.
Mr. Munoz, before you move on to the social-emotional section, on the two-week program, that's an early start for elementary students, when will that be?
We were hoping Dr. Benavides to have been able to schedule this summer to get the year started. Because of time constraints and of access to funds, we're going to be using, in starting that program next summer. However, some campuses are asking for permission to start it the first week of August, to get them in a week early this summer.
And it says there that it's going to be for students who are on level?
This is going to be an enrichment acceleration camp, Dr. Benavides, to get these kids ready for the school year. I know that some of the parents requested that we do not ignore that population, that we provide them an opportunity for acceleration as well. I know that one parent in particular mentioned that he was concerned because all he was hearing was, rather, that he was just hearing, "We're providing a lot of tutoring," right? He said, "What about my child? My child is accelerated." So that particular camp specifically for those students. And you will also hear later on in the presentation that we do have some summer camps, some enrichment camps for those students as well.
I'm just thinking, that's why I was wondering when it was going to be, because if it's going to be before and my child needs help and it's only for kids on level, well, then we're going to have the other side, you know, saying, "Well, how about my kid? Because my kid's behind and he really needs it." So I was just wondering when it was going to happen. That was question number one. And also on that page for the after-school tutorials, and I discussed this just briefly with Dr. Seines, two hours seems a lot for students, and it really, I know it has to be varied, but even if it's varied, two hours is a long time, you know? And so I'm just wondering how kids are going to be, as it is, our kids here in the district have a long day, and then for them to be two hours in additional. And then I know that even when we've had grants, we've had problems getting teachers who want to work, but the poor teachers working two hours and then getting home to make dinner and take care of their own children, I'm not sure that we're, you know, it sounds really good, but I'm not sure that we're going to get the, what needs to happen for two hours. I don't know. I mean, you, you all that have kids, I mean, I'm just thinking of when kids are young and, you know, an hour, hour and a half max, but two hours is a long time for kids after school when they're tired and, I don't know.
We'll be meeting with the principals, Dr. Benavides, just to gauge that, right, the commitment of the staff, the stamina of our students, and we'll make adjustments. I know that in some campuses, they do have a break in between where they take the kids out for recess and then they bring them back in, but we'll work with the principals. Within that two-hour frame, we are talking about the afternoon snacks that the students do receive, right? We do have dismissal in between, but again, we'll debrief with their principals after we get started to make some adjustments if necessary.
With middle school, I have the same question, so I won't repeat that, but I think also middle school kids have lots of things on their mind, so two hours also is a problem. On the high school, where it says that the focused interventions using the Silver Lining curriculum for the Algebra I, I know that success in Algebra I will determine success in college, and so I saw our drops even with the other numbers excluded. Is this going to be during the school day?
Both in school and after-school, Dr. Benavides, and we will also be offering weekends as well, as an opportunity to credit recovery and acceleration. We share your concern, I think, that at the state level. I know that when Commissioner Mike Morath shared the data, historical data, when it came to the effects that Hurricane Katrina had had on her students in East Texas, where they mentioned that after intensive interventions, they were able to close those learning gaps, the reading gaps in four years, but they were never able to close it in math. Of course, raises some flags, hence the reason why we're placing a big emphasis on closing that math gap in our high schools. But yes, those interventions will be in school, after school. Our executive director for high school, our coordinators, our math, high school teachers are working together to provide, to strengthen our curriculum, right, to make sure that we are offering those coursework during the day, to make sure that we close those gaps as soon as we're able to.
And then the other one is a two-part question, the one that says after-school extended day learning tutorials. Just what incentives are going to be planned to get the kids to tutorials? Because we know that history shows us that high school kids are very hard to get into tutorial classes after school. So that's part one of the question. And then part two is how will the students that are participating in athletics and, I'm sorry, there's a mosquito and I'm a magnet for them, so I'm like, how will those students that are in band or UIL in athletics, how are they going to be targeted? Because they can't go to the tutorials after school or the extended days, so how are they going to be?
Well, one of them, Dr. Benavides, to answer your question for those students, particular students, one of the things that our executive directors and our coordinators and teachers are looking at is again, strengthening the curriculum, making sure that we accelerate the learning by providing them those specific coursework, right, that will lead them to Now, for in regards to how do we entice them to stay and to participate, I know that...
And I don't expect you to have an answer, Mr. Munoz, but you can be thinking of how you're going to incentivize, because it is hard to get high school kids to attend any after-school classes. It's very hard.
We are fortunate that as a district, we were selected to participate in the ACE program. We currently have Wada Lincoln participating, and we offered a lot of incentives to do that ACE program for them. We have an enrichment program through the ACE. For next year, we're going to be scaling it up to all three high schools, so that should help.
Yeah, no, I love the ACE program. I know when we got it started, it was a big success, so.
So we will be adding ten additional schools this upcoming school year, so we're hoping that that is going to encourage our kids to stay after school and participate in these activities. And it's a combination of learning recovery and enrichment.
And the enrichment. And one of the things that we did realize is that principals were going to need funds for incentives, and so we built that into the ESAR budget, to give principals a budget for incentives. Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
You're welcome, Dr. P. So moving on to social-emotional recovery interventions. To mitigate the effect of COVID-19, La Jolla ISD will be providing individual group counseling and support groups, addressing, of course, grief and loss and coping with anxiety as part of a multi-tiered system of support for our students. For our tier-one students, our district will be using OVEAS, PBIS, mindfulness, character strong, and counseling and guidance lessons to provide our students social-emotional supports. For example, at the elementary level, students will receive bi-weekly guidance lessons with their certified counselor, and they will be following up, they're going to receive follow-up lessons with their classroom teachers. For our tier-two students, in addition to those tier-one supports, these students through RTI, RTI Behavior, they will receive prescriptive small group supports. And for our tier-three students, in addition to the tier-one and tier-two supports, these students through RTI Behavior and 504 will receive prescriptive individualized supports. And if necessary, campuses will receive staffing support to help students transition back into the classroom. These students will also receive mentoring supports.
Hopefully, there'll be less paperwork on the counselors, and I know that it's very tedious, all that logging, and it takes away from the true meaning of being a counselor.
One of the new house bills does mandate that as a district, we look at how much time our counselors are spending with our students. So we are working with our guidance and counseling departments and the services to make sure that our counselors are afforded to our students, so our students will have the opportunity to meet with our counselors.
And then is there a criteria that will determine between two and three? Because we all know that tier-three is, I mean, tier-one is all students, so between tier-two and three, will there be a specific criteria?
Yes, once we see, we recognize that one of our students needs supports, we do have behavior specialists that will be going, meeting with those students, and then designating the type of supports that these students are going to be receiving. Okay, moving on to our Empowering Parents Training Series. To mitigate the effect that COVID-19 has had on our students and community, the district will provide a series of trainings to parents in the areas of literacy, math, technology applications, and social-emotional wellness. The Empowering Parents trainings will provide weekly trainings to parents that will help them help their children. In the areas of literacy and math, parents and caregivers will be trained on how to take an active role in the development of their children's literacy and math skills. In technology applications, parents and caregivers will be trained on how to access online instructional resources and how to connect with their school and their teachers. And in the area of social-emotional wellness, parents and caregivers will be trained on how to support their children's social-emotional health at home.
The only comment I would make here is that I'm hoping, Dr. Seines, that the people who do the training are our district people, because our district people have a lot of training, like for example, on the literacy and on the math and technology and social-emotional awareness, that our district people do the training, instead of hiring just outside people that don't have the connection with the staff, I mean, with the parents, not the staff. Yes, yes, Dr. Benavides.
For technology, all right, to assist with learning recovery, La Jolla ISD will ensure students and teachers are fully equipped with the latest technology to facilitate the delivery of instruction, maximize learning, and increase student engagement. The instructional tools will also help our students build essential 21st century skills, provide our students easy access to information, accelerated learning, and blended learning opportunities to practice what they learn independently. Some of the technology supports that our district will be providing to our teachers and our students, every classroom will be receiving a presentation cart. That includes a big screen TV, an Apple TV, and a laptop, iPad with iPad pencils, webcams for teachers, one-to-one device for our students, mobile hotspots for students that have connectivity issues, and also improvements to our district bandwidth and infrastructure. In the area of physical wellness, the COVID-19 pandemic decreased physical activity and increased sedentary behavior. This had an adverse effect on our student and staff's physical and emotional health. To improve our students and staff's physical wellness, La Jolla ISD will provide a two-week summer physical wellness program that will increase social interactions and physical activity, and have a positive effect on the social-emotional mental health of our students. We will provide after-school intramural sports program. In partnership with our local Boys and Girls Club, our students will be participating in sports after school, like our soccer intramural program that we had this past school year. We will also be ensuring that our schools have instructional resources to implement physical and our health program. And we will reopen our Employee Wellness Center and provide recreational sports activities for our staff. Facility upgrades. To mitigate the spread of COVID-19 and other infectious diseases, La Jolla ISD will equip our district facilities with air purification systems. Thermometers have been installed in all buses and building entrances. Hand sanitation stations will be or have been installed in classrooms and hallways. Touchless water stations will be installed at every campus. Desks will be equipped with sneeze guards. We will increase the frequency of cleaning and disinfecting high-touch areas, and we will add outside eating areas to allow for spatial distancing during lunch periods. Now, which group are we going to be prioritizing? Well, as noted in our survey and our student performance data, all student groups struggled due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and therefore, our recovery plan is as comprehensive as possible, and will provide recovery interventions and acceleration to all groups. However, district data does indicate that our low-income students, our English language learners, and our students with disabilities were impacted the most. So to address and prioritize services to these hardest-hit populations, these students will be identified, and they will receive a prescriptive plan of support and interventions. In addition to in-class supports, these students will be offered after-school tutorials and will also be offered summer recovery opportunities. Now, in addition to those services that we're going to be providing to our students, we do have a special emphasis group, and that's our Algebra I testers, as you can see in the data, and I had previously mentioned, that is our priority. We want to make sure that we close that learning gap and that we graduate all our students as having passed that Algebra I EOC, right? So we will be providing additional supports to this one population. So now that we've identified and made those key decisions in regards to our plan, we want to identify short-term actions. So on the following slide, you see the approach that we're going to take to make sure that we are ready to implement this action plan, that's learning recovery action plan. So step one is to train administrators and instructional coordinators on the just-in-time interventions during our Leadership Academy, and that's going to be done by Region One. We will hire part-time tutors, campus personnel, to provide small group interventions. We will develop a tutoring curriculum. We will train our tutors in just-in-time interventions and on curriculum. We will screen students at BOI at the beginning of the year. We will identify our tier-two and our tier-three students. We will start high-dose tutoring, and then we will analyze six-week data and make adjustments. Now, aligning our plan to other work, as a district, we do participate in the ACE program and in community and schools, the CIS program. The ACE program is the 21st Century Grant. It's an after-school enrichment enhancement program, and we currently have this program in five elementaries, four middle schools, and one high school. And for the 2120 to school year, we will be scaling the ACE program to include additional schools. So as a follow-up to... So as a follow-up to that, we're gonna be creating a schedule that will allow our students to attend after-school tutorials and also participate in the ACE program activities. When it comes to Community and Schools, Community and Schools is a program that provides guidance and counseling, mentoring to at-risk students. We currently have Community and Schools operating in some of our campuses. But our plan is to scale up this initiative district-wide so that all schools have a Community School Social Worker working. So as a follow-up, we need to identify priority need students and then coordinate with Community and Schools to staff all campuses with a Community and Schools Social Worker. And then, the last part of our RSSP plan is to share the plan with the community. So that, in essence, starts today through this community presentation. The following steps would be then to differentiate this presentation for each focused school, including specific student achievement goals. We also need to designate and identify administrators from each school to help present this plan to their campuses. And we will also allow the community the opportunity to provide input and give recommendations through the RSSP feedback form, and the link is there in the presentation. We will then also present this presentation to the community and parents through the campuses. So the campuses will have their meetings and share this plan with their parents. And we will allow our parents and community the opportunity to provide input and feedback and give recommendations to their campus administration on what adjustments or what specific interventions are needed at those particular schools. And then our principals will also be sharing this presentation with the staff at their faculty meetings. And the staff will also be given that opportunity to give recommendations and input. And we do wanna thank our RSSP committee. Like I mentioned at the beginning, approximately over thirty district employees at the district level, at the campus level, participated in meeting weekly and crafting this plan. So we do appreciate all their commitment and effort to putting and crafting this plan for our district. Now, Board of Trustees, any questions or feedback in regards to this plan?
On slide number sixty-five for the facility upgrades, has there been an evaluation to see which campuses need more upgrades when it comes to the purification, the air purification systems?
They have, Dr. Benavides, they've inventoried the current systems that we have in place. And so they have a specific list of campuses they wanna prioritize.
And will we have a work session on that?
We're planning either a committee meeting with the Facilities Committee or at another work session where we can share the plan that has been drawn for us on HVAC and air purification. So we do have that plan, and we will be sharing it with you.
And then, on the... Maybe it's here, but maybe I just haven't gotten to it. On the priority areas identified by the task force, and then it has the amount of monies. On the staffing, do we have a breakdown on that, the thirty-one million on staffing?
Yes, Dr. Benavides, that's the next part of the agenda. And when we get there, we'll share the breakdown as to how they're planning to use that money. So thank you very much, Board of Trustees.
What was that response? Say it again.
I apologize, Dr. Benavides, that will be the next part of our meeting agenda, right? We will be talking, discussing the ESR III district initiatives, and we will give you a breakdown as to how those thirty-one million dollars will be used.
The next portion of our agenda is the actual funds and the costs. So that will come up in this part of the presentation.
I'm just having problems hearing echoes, and so I hear part-
I think the shields make it difficult for us to hear.
Yes, so that's why. I apologize.
No, no, that's okay, Dr. Benavides.
I'm sure you responded correctly, I just didn't get it.
So we're ready to go on to the next item on the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
The next item is Discussion of the 2020-2023 American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund District Initiatives.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. The presentation that is on tab two of your binders talks about these initiatives that we talked about, but also the funding allocated to each of these activities from our ESR III funds. Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
So the purpose of the ARP ESR III funds are to safely reopen and sustain the safe operation of schools and address the impact of the COVID pandemic on our students. One of the stipulations is that as a district, we at least allocate twenty percent of the funds to address learning loss-type of activities. Now, as per TEA, total allocation amounts for La Jolla ISD are as follows. The total allocation amount will be one hundred and forty-seven million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars. The initial allocation, which is two-thirds of that amount, is ninety-eight million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars, with the remaining allocation of one-third being forty-nine million, one hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two. So as a district, we are strategically aligning our ESR funds to support each of the priority areas that were identified by the RSSP Task Force. Priority areas identified by the RSSP are learning recovery, technology upgrades and enhancement, social emotional wellness supports, professional development, facility repairs, and staffing. So on the next slide, on slide eighty-two, you can see a breakdown and percentage-wise, how that money will be used, talking about the first two-thirds allocation. So in learning recovery, we are allocating thirteen point seven million dollars. In technology upgrades, seventeen point eight million dollars. Social emotional support, four point seven million dollars. Staffing, thirty-one point six million dollars. Facility, seventeen point four million dollars. And in safety, we are allocating twelve point eight million dollars. Percentage-wise, the question is, are we meeting that twenty percent learning loss requirement? So in the areas of learning loss, which fall under learning recovery, social emotional learning, technology upgrades, and staffing, we are allocating sixty-eight point two million dollars, which is around sixty-nine percent of that first two-thirds allocation. And in the area of safety, we are allocating thirty point two million dollars to address facility upgrades and mitigation activities or strategies for safety. So in the following slides, you will see the breakdown in regards to, for example, learning recovery, that thirteen point nine million dollars. For elementary, we are earmarking three million dollars to support that initiative. And again, this is for the 2122 school year. One point two million dollars for middle school and one million dollars for high schools. We're also designating eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for our part-time tutors and three million dollars for summer school recovery programs. On page eighty-five, you will see that we are designating two hundred and seventy-four thousand for after-school and Saturday tutorials specifically for our CTE students. Three hundred thousand to purchase CTE certification kits for our CTE students. One hundred and fourteen thousand going to our middle school college board pre-AP curriculum. One hundred and sixty-four thousand for our high school college board pre-AP materials and curriculum. Three hundred and five thousand for our enrichment summer camps for our gifted and talented students. Seventy thousand for our advanced placement teacher and students to compensate these students for meeting that three-year-better score on their AP exams. Ninety-nine thousand for our college-equipped readiness to CERT initiative. These provide individualized remedial lessons for our high school students. And also, twenty-nine thousand for the THI prep from college-equipped readiness to the CERT program. We're also allocating one hundred and fourteen thousand for the National Hispanic Institute participation. One hundred and forty-five thousand for the college board pre-SAT, SAT for our eighth and ninth graders, SAT testing for tenth to twelfth graders. One hundred and six thousand will be going to supplement our ACE grant, Cycle Ten program. And eighty-five thousand will be earmarked for our professional development Empowering Parents Training Series. One hundred and fifty thousand will be going to advise Texas College Advisors. This is an organization that's gonna partner with our academies to encourage our students to attend college and be college-ready. One hundred and twenty-five thousand will be going to, allocated to college campus visits. And one hundred and twenty thousand will be to hire consultants to assist dropout prevention and graduation. The following slide lists the amounts that we're gonna be allocating for resources, whether these are literacy, math, science, and PE and athletics. We have six hundred and twelve thousand to implement the Reading Academy Initiative with Fidelity. Six hundred and ninety thousand for math, two hundred and twenty-two thousand for science, and seven hundred and ninety-six thousand to equip our PE and athletics department with equipment and supplies. Under technology, we are allocating fourteen million, seven hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and thirty point thirty-one cents for instructional technology tools. One point four million dollars to upgrade our Network Operations Center to improve our district bandwidth and infrastructure. And one hundred and forty-eight thousand to safeguard and enhance our cybersecurity protections for our district. We are also allocating fifty-three thousand for House Bill thirty-nine oh six to be able to transition to online testing. Nine hundred and sixty thousand for CTE-specific technology. And two hundred and twenty-one thousand is gonna be allocated to purchase sensory equipment for our students with disabilities. Ninety-five thousand for a hundred to purchase interactive learning stations for our students with disabilities. One thousand seven hundred and fifty will be going to support our visually impaired students. And one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifteen will be to purchase classroom auditory systems for our self-contained classrooms for our student with disability populations. Moving on to social emotional health and physical wellness allocations. To be able to provide that two-week summer wellness program that's gonna increase physical and mental fitness, we are allocating one million dollars. Forty thousand will be going to our Tier Three RTI behavioral supports. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars for our Employee Wellness Program. Forty-two thousand dollars to implement a ten-day professional development training on social emotional health and student resiliency. And one point one million dollars is being allocated to purchase playground equipment for all twenty-three elementaries to promote social, emotional, and physical wellness. Ninety thousand dollars, nine hundred thousand, rather, will be allocated to the Community and Schools program. Three hundred thousand for after-school enrichment, supplemental ACE enrichment programs. One hundred and twenty-five thousand to purchase or acquire PBIA's discipline management software. One hundred and twenty-five thousand to provide social emotional learning softwares or curriculum. Six hundred and forty thousand will be allocated to implement the PBIA system district-wide with Fidelity. And three hundred and thirty-three thousand will be used to provide funds to provide in-school and after-school activity slash incentives to encourage our students to save for after-school activities. Now for staffing. We allocated a hundred thousand for the ESR III Administrator Grant Shepherd. That would be their yearly salary. Ten point five million dollars will be used to provide a two thousand five hundred dollar retention stipend for approximately four thousand two hundred full-time employees. One million dollars to provide a two hundred and fifty COVID-19 immunization stipend for full-time and part-time employees. One million dollars to provide a five hundred dollar teacher technology and classroom resource stipend for full-time teachers of La Jolla ISD. Fifteen million dollars will be allocated for instructional staff, and that is to continue to employ staff to carry out our learning recovery initiatives. And then four million dollars will be allocated for indirect staffing costs that might be due to the continuation of employing staff to implement our learning recovery initiatives.
I think, Mr. Trevino, can provide more information on the instructional staff, the fifteen million dollar expenditure?
As part of the staff, that, part of the ESR funds, they allow the district to meet certain guidelines as far as the, for targeted assistance and so forth. So they allow the district to take some of the locally funded teachers and reclassify them over to the ESR funds with the purpose to continue with the learning recovery and so forth, to continue to employ staffing on that. So we're moving a total over the three-year, well, since right now we're only applying for two-thirds, we're gonna move about forty-five million dollars from the general fund over to the ESR fund to pay, continue paying for our staff.
And not just continue paying for staff, but also so that we can extend the life of the grant and be able to do some of these activities beyond 2024 as needed to continue to address the learning loss.
And that was one of the things that basically is like, try to build up your fund balance in your general fund so that you can continue with the outreach activities and so forth, to continue after the ESR funds are exhausted, which would be, our last year would be 2024.
And for this year, about how many teachers are you thinking?
We don't have the exact number. We're going based on the dollar amount. For this school year, we're gonna go with about forty to forty-five million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Trevino.
So moving on to facility upgrades. We are allocating twelve million dollars to HVAC equipment upgrades and replacement to allow for cleaner and safer indoor air. Two point nine million dollars will be used to upgrade our air purification systems and to replace, and replace current outdated systems to allow for cleaner and safer indoor air. One million dollars will be allocated to HVAC controls upgrades. Three hundred thousand dollars will be used to purchase generators for our CNS department to safeguard food safety. And one point two million dollars to improve and repair playing fields at three of our middle schools. In the areas of safety, we are allocating four point two million dollars to purchase additional buses and improve our transportation fleet to safely transport students to and from school. Two point five million dollars will be used to add benches and outdoor covered areas to allow our students to safely distance themselves during lunch and during passing periods. And we will be allocating six million dollars to provide our schools with PPE equipment, masks, shields, gloves, test kits, sanitizer, signage, water bottles, temperature scanners, and water dispensers. Now, our plan is to use the remaining allocation, which is the forty-nine million dollars, to continue to fund initiatives during the 2022 and 2223 school year and during the 2324 school year.
So the total of this plan and what we have been asked by the state to do the plan for two-thirds of the grant fund, which is the ninety-eight million dollars. So that's what these activities totaled to.
That is correct, Dr. Science.
Mr. Munoz, I don't know how you got nominated to do the whole presentation, but you did an excellent job.
Thank you, Dr. Science.
You really did. Thank you so much.
Thank you to you and your team for putting all this together.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll let them know.
Are there any other questions or comments from our Board of Trustees?
Any other questions? I know that's our next item on the agenda, so. I was just thinking, Dr. Science, when you do the facilities work session, if somehow you could list, Rick, you could list in terms of priorities the schools that are, maybe the older schools that need more work, that we need to really get on them fast and be able to see that so that the community can see that we're really addressing the needs so that people can feel safe and that they're gonna be breathing clean air. And so I think we, it merits our time to look at that.
Thank you, Dr. Benavides. I think this report might be structured like that, by priority areas. If it's not, then we'll work on it before we present it to you.
Now, this presentation, Dr. Benavides, Board of Trustees, is still- Now, this presentation, Dr. Benavides, Board of Trustees, is still pending negotiation? Mr. Jerraflores, our federal and state progress director, will be submitting the application, and we will initiate that negotiation period where they will let us know whether these expenditures will be allowable. And in the event that they're not, those monies will be reallocated to some of those activities that we mentioned in the presentation.
The only other comment I had under staffing, number, page 95, it says that the retention staff, a retention stipend for staff was going to be 1,250 per semester, and if I remember, my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, we said part of it at the beginning of the school year and the other part in December. We did not say per semester, so I don't know if there was a change or I'm wrong.
It is, that is how we're planning it, but we just put the total amount here just for the sake of showing you the total amount. But our plans are that it would be paid at two different times, the way you all specified.
When we get the money in September or whenever, and then again in December.
Yes, that's the plan. And we'll make sure that we put it like that on the application, just to be on the safe side.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from any of the trustees? If there are no other questions, then we adjourn this work session at 6:43.